Okay, Mr. Marshall, I see six thirty-five. I see that you have a quorum of the board. The attendees are coming on in. We have Amherst Media with us in the house. I don't see Karen in the attendees, but I'll just keep watching for her. And I think you're good to go.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Welcome to the Amherst Planning Board Meeting of February nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. My name is Doug Marshall and as Chair of the Amherst Planning Board. I am calling this meeting to order at six thirty-five P. M. This meeting is being recorded and is available live stream via Amherst Media. Minutes are being taken. Pursuant to chapter twenty of the Acts of two thousand and twenty-one and extended by chapter two of the Acts of two thousand and twenty-three. This planning board meeting, including public hearings, will be conducted via remote means using the Zoom platform. The Zoom meeting link is accessible on the meeting agenda posted on the town website's calendar listing for this meeting. Or go to the planning board webpage and click on the most recent agenda where the Zoom link is listed at the top of the page. No in-person attendance of the public is permitted. However, every effort will be made to ensure the public can adequately access the meeting in real time via technological means. In the event we are unable to do so for reasons of economic hardship or despite best efforts, we will post an audio or video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting on the town's website. Board members, I will take a roll call. When I call your name, unmute yourself, answer affirmatively, and return to mute. Bruce Colton.
I am here.
Brad Hartwell.
I am here.
Jesse Major.
Present.
Karen Winter.
Here.
And I, Doug Marshall, am present. Lawrence Clutz and Johanna Newman had advised us they would not be present this evening. So we have five members present and we have a quorum. Board members, if technical issues arise, we may need to fix the pause. Pause. We may do need to pause to fix the problem and then continue the meeting. If the discussion needs to pause, it will be noted in the minutes. Please use the raise hand function to ask a question or to make a comment, and I will call on you to speak. After speaking, remember to re-mute yourself. To the general public, the general public comment item is reserved for public comment regarding items not on tonight's agenda. Please be aware the board will not respond to comments during general public comment period. Public comment may also be heard at other times during the meeting when deemed appropriate by the planning board chair. Please indicate you wish to make a comment by clicking the raise hand button when public comment is solicited. If you have joined the Zoom meeting using a telephone, please indicate you wish to make a comment by pressing star nine on your phone. When called on, please identify yourself by stating your full name and address and put yourself back into mute when finished speaking. Residents can typically express their views for up to three minutes or at the discretion of the planning board chair. If a speaker does not comply with these guidelines or exceeds their allotted time, their participation may be disconnected from the meeting. Okay, first item on the agenda is our minutes approval of minutes. We have one set of minutes in the packet is from December eighteenth. Did anyone have any comments on those minutes? Jesse?
Thanks. Yes, I like the new format. Seems to be a new format, so seems a little easier to digest. One, one minor comment, I guess it's really grammatical. I noticed a few places, particularly in section six, general housing discussion. Where I think what was meant was discussion regarding something and just says discuss a definition, for example. So it's really just maybe a little grammar, you know. Does that make sense? Particularly in points two and three under section six, I noticed, and then.
Oh, I see what you're saying, Jesse. Those are actually how it was written on the agenda. And I, and I just tried to match it up to be the exact same way. So if somebody wanted to compare an item on the agenda, they could easily find it in the minutes.
Well, I, I think, Jesse, are you noticing the difference between item one, which says discussion?
Yes, and, and if you're correct, and if you're reading in minutes, you know, it, you know, you would, you would read, there was discussion of content X, but I, I understand what you're saying, Pam. And like, I don't know what's proper, so.
But two and three probably could be discussion, and that would be an improvement.
I'm happy to change it. I'm just, I'm just I'm, I'm happy to change it.
Yeah, Bruce?
The agenda seems to be what's intended in the future and the minutes are what happened in the past. So that's why I think discuss changes to discussion.
Yeah. And we probably ought to be consistent in our agendas, too. Uh, Karen?
Yeah, teeny thing with the comma on page three nineteen. Did you see that along the minimum from comma setback line to?
Yeah, there's an excess comma there.
Yeah.
Okay, point me a little closer to where it is.
Upper, near the top of page three.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Karen.
Sorry, nine, on nineteen. That line, do you see?
Second line of item nineteen.
Yep.
I'm going to generally be looking. Oh, I sure do. Thank you. Thank you so much.
All right, any other comments, Jesse?
Nope, I was gonna move to accept the minutes.
Okay. So moved.
I will second.
Thank you, Bruce. Any further discussion? So we're moving to approve with the edits that we've discussed. We have discussed this evening. Okay, we'll go through the roll, starting with you, Bruce.
I approve.
And Fred?
Yes, I approve.
Thank you. Jesse?
Hi.
And I approve as well. And Karen, excuse me.
I approve.
Thank you. Okay. Time now is six forty-two. We'll go to the next item, which is public comment. And so anybody who wants to make a comment, this is the time to raise your hand so that I can call on you. At the moment, I see ten attendees in the public. And they're, they are indicated as follows. Janet McGowan. A person whose phone number is available. One, six, one, nine, five, seven, eight, one, eight, zero, nine. Maybe you know that person. Barry Roberts, Christine Brestrop, EDM capitalized. Gail Flood, James from W A M C, Jonathan Salvon, Maura Keane, and Tom Reedy. And I'm, I know that a number of those folks are here for our first public hearing. All right, there's one hand up at the moment, Janet McGowan. Pam, why don't we bring Janet over and Janet, give us, give us your name and your address again, and you have three minutes.
Hi, hello, friends. I'm Janet McGowan. I live at seven oh six Southeast Street. I have a general comment that goes to some issues that you've been discussing. And I'm really excited the planning board is taking on a lot of the issues about protecting neighborhoods and quality of life there. In my years in Amherst, I haven't seen the planning department ever address this issue about protecting neighbors from an influx of student housing that is bolstered or enhanced by investors' efforts. I feel, so I, you know, basically, I've been attending the housing subcommittee meetings and other forums in the town, and I don't think there's one solution that's the fix, but that we need a series of fixes. The master plan directs density to the Village Centers and Amherst Center, not into residential neighborhoods. And so we need to balance needs, the need for student housing, which UMass can easily and simply address by building more on campus, since they have more students. You know, we need mixed neighborhoods of students, elders, families, single people, long-term residents. And I think that restoring footnote M is a good start to.
That's, that's later on the agenda tonight, so let's hold off on comments about things on the agenda.
Yeah, I think, I'm just saying, it's, it's one of many solutions about figuring out ways to keep neighborhood quality and density at a reasonable level. And also, there's other things that the housing subcommittee is looking at in terms of maintaining the nick mix of housing that we have. So I just appreciate the planning board taking it on and, and taking such efforts with it.
All right, thank you, Janet. Do, I don't see any other hands at this point. One last call, if anybody is a member of the public that wanted to make a comment at this time about something not on the agenda. So it doesn't look like any hands are raised, so we'll go on to the next item. Time now is six forty-five. We'll have our, we'll get our first public hearing going. All right, in accordance with the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter forty-eight, this public hearing has been duly advertised and notice thereof has been posted and is being held for the purpose of providing the opportunity for interested citizens to be heard regarding S P R two thousand and twenty-four dash eleven, U Drive Amity LLC, University Drive at Amity Street, advertised for six thirty-five P. M., and we're after that time, so we are good to go on that. Request site plan review approval under section three point three five, three two five of the zoning bylaw to redevelop existing commercial space into an eighty-five residential unit and commercial space mixed-use development, including parking, landscape, lighting, and stormwater infrastructure. Arso located at thirteen B dash eighteen, also twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty, and fifty-four in the B L zoning district. This hearing is continued from August seventh, September eighteenth, November sixth, December eighteenth of last year and January twenty-second of this year. Are there any board member disclosures at this time for this continuation of this hearing? Don't see anybody just indicating they have a disclosure. All right, so we'll go to our applicants. Mr. Reedy, welcome back, and Mr. Roberts and Mr. Salvon, I guess.
Terrific.
Tell us why you're here.
Sure. Uh, thank you very much, Mr. Chair, members of the board, for the record. Tom Reedy, attorney with Bacon Wilson out of Amherst, here on behalf of U Drive Amity and its application for mixed-use site plan approval for the corner of University Drive and Amity Street in Amherst, with me, Barry Roberts, the, the principal associated with U Drive Amity, and then we have our architect Jonathan Salvon here as well. We have been here as a chair mentioned a couple of times. Most recently, about a month ago, where we unveiled an updated plan. As you recall, we had a two-building, three-curb-cut approach that had eighty-five units with some interior parking. We revised the plan to be a single-building, two-curb-cut approach with, now it has seventy-eight units. It was seventy-seven last time, now it's seventy-eight because we added a studio. There are seventy-eight units, two hundred and twenty-five beds, still the same amount of commercial space and the same amount of surface parking of a hundred and sixty parking spaces. And when we were here last, we went away with some homework. Discussion about some of the exterior spaces in the, the area proximate to the roundabout and then on what I'd call the, the inside elbow. And then we also received some correspondence from your town planner who had asked for some additional information, which we provided last week, potentially, maybe last Tuesday. So hopefully you've had the opportunity to look at it. What I'm gonna do is walk through the architectural plan is updated, the site plan, the lighting plan, just to touch on a couple of those pieces, the landscape plan. And then we're happy to answer any questions that you have. One other piece, last Wednesday, we were in front of the Amherst Conservancy Commission and received the order of conditions. And so that was voted last Wednesday. We need to get a variance from the zoning board of appeals or strike that. We need to amend the existing variance from the zoning board of appeals. The one that we have has two pieces that we need to amend. One of those is that it restricted the height of the building to no more than fifty-seven feet. We submitted a modification request to be fifty-nine point five feet. And this is a result of a couple of things. One, additional due diligence on site uncovered that we're gonna have to raise the site a bit, or at least the first floor level of the site. Two, the way that height is measured in Amherst is from the average grade on the street side, and we've got two street sides. We've got University Drive and Amity Street. And so I think Amity Street is the, the determining height. And then three, this is going to be a passive house construction. And so there are, and Jonathan can get into it more if, if you'd like him to, but we need some additional spaces between floors, you know, additional height in between floors to allow for ductwork to allow certain airflow. And so because of all of those things, we're requesting fifty-nine point five feet. We're in front of the zoning board of appeals on March thirteenth. One of the other conditions of that variance that requires us to modify it is that they, the Z B A, approved that previous variance in accordance with the site plan that they had in front of them. And so this evening, what we're gonna be asking for hopefully is an approval, and that approval conditioned upon the zoning board of appeals ultimately granting the variance for the additional height, which we believe won't be an issue. Why we're asking for the approval instead of waiting is I don't want to get into a, a leapfrog or a chicken in the egg where you don't approve tonight, we appear in front of the Z B A. They approve, they condition it on that site plane being approved, and then we're back in front of you, and then something changes, and then that site plan changes, and then I've got to go back to the Z B A. And so we'd request, if you find everything else satisfactory, we'd ask that you approve us this evening. So that's a little bit of where we are, where we've been and where we hope to go to. And so with that, let me share my screen, and then we can talk through some of those changes. Try misspeak at all, by all means, please hop in. Here, you should be able to see my screen, which is rendering of the elevation from the east. So this is the easterly side. University Drive is at the bottom. Amity Street is at the top. We will get into a little bit more detail on some of those changes, but you can see just from first blush, we've changed the material on this corner to be the, the brick that is on the adjacent parts, the adjacent panels here. So we've got brick here, that metal siding and then brick here. You'll see that, and we'll again get a close-up, but you'll see that we've modified the materials on this interior or exterior courtyard. And then we've got some other seating here. I'll scroll down so you can see. And I'll zoom in just a little bit. So you'll see campus view is shown here. That's, that's the signage proposed for the project. It will be likely backlit because we think that's probably the classiest for, for something like this. I'll scroll down a little so you can see, and I'll zoom in. So you can see the screening proposed. So the electric meter bank and the transformer are located in this general area. And so we've got some screenings, some vegetative screening. I know that a resource is sensitive about proximity and obstructions, and so we've designed this, and I thought I'd say Jonathan has designed this based upon what he's learned over at forty-five fifty-five South Pleasant Street for proximity and clearance and all of that. So this is, I'd show you if I could take the trees down, but we're that electric bank is going to be. And then, as I promised, here's some, some close-ups of what those exterior spaces. We do want to be careful, you know, programming them because we don't have commercial tenants yet. We've been talking to several, but we don't have any of them signed up with leases yet. So that's just to say, you know, these are conceptual. We've added some vegetation on each side. The back of this campus view, as you'll see here, the signage is actually a whole level of seating. And then we've got some chairs and tables proposed for out in that area, and then we've carried some of that brick through to tie in with the building. As we get to the site plan, you know, one of the requests was to have a sidewalk connection here. You know, we, we think that the way that it's currently routed, after talking to the town engineer, makes the most sense, and so we've left it that way. I'll show the rear plaza. I'll call it the inside of the elbow. Again, just picking up some different textures, adding some, you know, here with a brick, and then adding some seating and some, some bike racks. I'll go to the first floor plan and then just zoom in a little bit. We've, we've added interior bike storage. So one of the comments that we heard last time was, you know, exterior storage is good, interior storage is better. And so we've got that interior bike storage here. This is likely to be key fob entry. You know, Nate had asked a question whether or not we'd be doing exit only, but I think this is probably key fob entry. There will be a division similar to U Drive South or One University Drive where the key fobs access only the residential space, you know, so once folks are in, if you have a key fob, you can go into the residential space. If you don't have a key fob, you can't go into the residential space. There'll be a system where folks can actually buzz down and, and let their guests in if needed, but it's just to separate the commercial from the, the residential. Interior trash room, same as One University Drive South, which keeps the parking lot quite a bit cleaner than if you've got exterior trash storage. Same office retail space breakout as we've had before. I'll scroll down, fitness center on that second floor. Community space here in the corner. Again, community space, and then fifth floor, we've added dividers and exterior space to some of the units. You know, so this one will have an exterior space, that will have an exterior space. This is not exterior space. The exterior space is here. We don't have exterior space in the front. So some of the fifth floor units do have exterior decks, but others do not. Again, maybe I will, I'll go down to this one. So here you've got brick color. Signage. Metal paneling spec. And we've got that cut-through view, so you can see the building, the step back, what we've got for rooftop mechanicals and, and their screening. It, it will be that metal screening, but it'll look more like a fence than anything else. Jonathan, anything else we want to hit on with the architecturals?
Can you hear me? That's where I was having video and, and audio problems a while ago. Can folks hear me?
Yes.
Great. Doc Town, if you scroll down just a little bit to brick colors. You know, we have been showing two colors of, of masonry, the, the traditional white brick, a tan brick. What's new here is the, the gray tone that we're putting the coordinate with another siding, and now if you scroll back up to the elevations. One of the things that, that, you know, Barry and I sat down with Gail in his office, and we were looking at the elevations. One thing we thought would be nice would be to, to bring Tom, if you just scroll up to the elevations. We, we simply have a masonry base all the way around the building. So we have added that, that third tone of brick in as a accent at the base of the building. Kind of under the areas that are shown as light gray, that, that darker gray would be that, that third tone of, of masonry.
And so the metals. Metal siding here, too. Brick.
That's.
Brick. And then, brick.
Review. History comes all the way down to the ground now. I think that's a little bit higher on that page, Tom. There you go.
So the corner is the yellowy brick?
Is the tan, tan, yellowy brick, correct?
Oh, okay. It didn't read that way on the rendering. Looks pretty gray. But.
So we can look at them again?
Okay, well.
Yeah, it's, 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 it's it's difficult to get a perfect match between screens and printing and, and, you know, materials. But that's, that's the, that's the intended range of the power.
All right. So I'm trying to remember the last time we approved a site plan. Was that when you had two separate buildings?
And when you say approved, do you mean reviewed?
The site plan you are presenting tonight. You are asking for approval because it has changed.
You've never approved it for us.
At all, okay.
At all.
Zoning is, is something we're trying for a newer approval.
Okay. All right. So Nate, are you available to speak for a moment? I guess we've been advised that we would be better off not approving the plans tonight and with, that if we did it March nineteenth, that we would be on firmer ground. And that's approximately a week after your visit with the Z B A. So I just wanted to say that at the outset of this conversation. Board members. Comments. Other than that, you're, you've seen enough of Tom and Barry in the last six months. Anybody have any comments? Do they like what they've done with the building? Bruce?
Yes, I mean, I've been, I've reviewed the, the documentation that was put into the packet and so forth, so I've seen but one of the things I hadn't perhaps noticed before, but it makes sense. I think I'm seeing two elevators, and I imagine that whereas yeah, there are two elevators and not just one.
Yes.
Interesting. Okay, well, that's I do have something at the appropriate time about affordable housings and the, the affordable units and the distribution of them. I know that the the development application report suggested that we look at that somewhat more critically, and, and I'm not disposed to agree with what the development report says. So at the appropriate time, Doug, you could call on me to make my case. I think otherwise, the, the, and I found the lighting plan. I know that last time you were here, Tom, we, we looked at the lighting plan, but I, no, we didn't. We looked at the light fixtures. And, and I was trying to get a sense of where some of these fixtures were going. And then very quickly, but not during that meeting, but a day or two afterwards, a lighting plan was distributed. And I opened it up, and it's, it's difficult to understand, not because it's small, because you can make it bigger. But when you make it bigger, the text is overlaying, particularly in places around the building. And it's still not really possible to get a clear sense of which fixtures are where. And I also couldn't quite locate some of those fixtures as on the, on the lighting fixture schedule. I, 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 I couldn't make, I couldn't make a clear connection between the submittal package of fixtures and which what the reference number for those fixtures. I would like the submittal package to have the fixture A one or B one or whatever it is so that we can quickly go from that fixture to the lighting plan. I mean, I don't suppose I mind going through the fixture schedule, but the fixture schedule has to be able to make reasonable connection to the submittal package. And I wasn't able to make that connection. So the lighting arrangement in terms of the fixtures and so forth is still Greek to me, although I did look at the, the illumination. uh, Greek to me, although I did look at the, uh, the illuminations and so forth. And generally speaking, I think I understand that you've got at least enough lighting. Uh, it does spill a little bit into the wetlands. I don't know whether the conservation commission care about that. Can I ask whether they saw the lighting plan, um, and appreciated there was a little bit of spillover?
Um. It would have been part of our packet. I don't know that they even paid attention to the existence of spillover into the wetlands. I don't know, uh, that that would have been any factor in, in their decision. I'm looking and seeing, uh, cause I'm looking at the lighting plan now. You know, I don't know that they for a portion of the wetlands proximate to Amity Street, which is probably already going to be illuminated because of street lighting. Um, I don't know that there is any light spillage into the wetlands proper. It might be into the buffer zone of the wetlands. But I don't know that it's into the wetlands itself and.
And, and I don't know whether that's a problem. I, I was really asking whether anybody knows whether that's, uh, I mean, you can see that we've got, uh, one and two foot candles going, um, a few, uh, bullets into the, into the wetland. And it's a little bit the same on the other side, that some of those big lights uh, are right next, but I take your point that it's, it's filling into the buffer zone. So my guess is without really knowing, you know, what wildlife think about this sort of stuff, uh, that is probably fine. And I think I'm just going to leave it at that. But I would like to be able to understand where the fixture package, uh, submittals occur on the plan.
Sure. And so if I could, one of the things that we did was, uh, I put together, I'd call it maybe a relatively crude uh, fixture document to show, right? So this is type A. This is the recessed and I'll, I'll go back to the lighting plan and then show you. So there's three fixtures that we're proposing. That's it. A, which is the recessed.
Yeah.
B, which is the pole. This is what the pole will look like. It will vary in height between 12 feet or 18 feet, and I'll show you that on a plan.
Yep.
So any B is this, the, the B2, the B3, the B4 is just the LED configuration in this top pack here, right? So it's not like there are different D fixtures. The Bs are all these freestanding and then you've got C, which is the wall sconces.
Okay, that's what I, yeah. Um, I mean, I think I'm fine with it. It's just that I couldn't understand it easily. That's all. But this helps. I don't think you had type Cs, type Bs and type As on the, uh, submittal, uh, pack that was put up in our. Uh.
It should be the same, the same picture designations.
Yeah. And this was, I, I had, it was in the Dropbox link or strike at the OneDrive link. So I know I, I uploaded it last Tuesday, but you'll see just for complete completeness, right? So you got the As here, which are those recessed. As which are the recessed, C, which are the, the sconces. As are the recessed, the Bs, as I said, those are the freestanding, you know, here. Eighteen feet, eighteen feet, twelve feet, twelve feet, twelve feet, twelve feet.
Oh, I see. And B goes all the way down to a bollard, which is just a low pole, right?
Uh, the, the Bs, all the Bs are those, uh, um, I'll go, let me go back to the.
But I see a couple of B ones in the, uh, elbow, which look like they're probably bollards, but I, I'm.
No, they're still, they're still taller. All of them are taller, right? So these are eighteen feet. These Bs are eighteen feet. These are twelve feet. I'll even go.
It's not going to be a problem for the first floor uh, residents.
And that's where the, the LED, um, configuration varies, Bruce. They've got, some of them have, uh, and it's been a week since I talked to anybody in person, but it basically has a, a cover. And so that it shines.
You've thought about it. You've thought about it. That's what you're saying.
Yes, we tried to think about it.
That's probably good enough.
And so Bruce.
I think I'm done, sorry.
Uh, are you, are you asking for an additional submittal? I mean, I, from what I've seen.
I think at the moment I know enough. I didn't realize there was, uh, it was that these, basically we've got three lighting fixtures and then, and these are the variations and, and the photometric variations are there. Some of them are, are quite tight and everything, but whereas I, I have to determine whether where, where, where my cur, where, where my curiosity becomes irrelevant to the, uh, the review, the rational review of this stuff. And I, I think, I, I think we, my curiosity doesn't have to be satisfied anymore than it currently is. So no, I don't think I am asking for anything further than what we've seen.
Okay, thank you, Bruce. Jesse?
Thanks, um. Thanks, Tom, for the presentation. Uh, just mostly a comment just to say, I think it reflects our conversation last time. I like, like the improvements. Um, one minor question about access. I didn't quite catch what you're saying about key fob entry on the first floor plan. Really, I'm just wondering about that corner location, if that's the newest hot restaurant in town, for example, and someone parks in the back. Are they able to go through the first floor or they're walking all the way around? I just didn't catch what you said.
E, yes, uh, they would be able to go through the first floor.
Yep.
Uh, it's.
So that's the key fob.
Correct, yes, yes.
Thanks, that's it.
All right, uh. Other board members, any other comments? Karen?
Yeah, uh, the commercial space, how, uh, are, now, if there's a shop on the bottom that I want to visit, would I be parking behind the building and entering from the back? Or how, I'm, I'm trying to, to picture this, this commercial space, how that's working?
So you'll see, uh, we've got, you know, space here, a lobby here, and so there's, there's parking spaces, parking spaces, parking spaces here. Entering through this lobby into this space, entering through this lobby into this space. You've got, um, entry here. And then entry here and entry here. So it, it, I mean, you can also come in through this front door as well, um. Or directly into the space, like you can see that there's direct access from the easterly side also. So you know, it, it, I think we tried to consider both vehicular, pedestrian, um, you know, bus traffic folks who are just, you know, take the bus walk, need to get into, you know, one of the stores, they can just walk in the front. Or if it's vehicular, come around the back and, and come in that way.
Yeah, okay, I got it. Yeah, it's a little, it, it's true. It's kind of tricky because you have the pedestrian. And then you have the people that are coming by cars. And so you're essentially going to have to lure them in from two sides. Yeah.
Yep.
A little tricky.
And it will somewhat depend on what the individual tenants are. You know, some will have more foot traffic, um, some will have more, more car traffic depending on who was actually interested, interested in the spaces.
All right, Karen, are you all set?
I'm all set.
All right, thank you. Bruce?
Um, Tom, John, can you tell us, run us through the trash pickup a little? The trash is nicely stored in the building. There's probably a trash chute is there somewhere?
Yeah, it's, it's trash, it's, it's still in design. I'll, I'll say, Bruce, we discussed it with with Barry, we're going to try to work something out, but we didn't have time to, to connect our, our five, five floors yet with, with a shaft, but that's the whole intent, that there might be a, a trash chute. Um, and then a couple of times a week, probably given the volume of people here, that we, we were, we're someone, we were the, the brins out and that, you know, there's no, it's a flush curve at that point, I mean, at six or seven in the morning, whenever the, the time is, the, the trash gets picked up uh, before the start of the, of the workday.
Hmm, so the trash is going to be picked up right in the, in the, in the.
In the, in the turnaround loop.
In the, in the busy path. So I guess you've thought about this, you'd probably, you might say to yourself, well, it would be nice if we could, uh, put it less to the center, but if you put it less to the center, then the, the trash is less convenient for the people on the upper floors in order to get to it, to put it down. So I guess I'm looking at a, a, a classic, uh, design, uh, uh, choice between convenience at one level and, and disruption at another. So, but anyway, I can see, so the trash truck has to come in and, and probably make a loop around that in the parking area and stop there and pick up and so forth. Okay. Just needed to know what you were intending.
It's a similar pattern to why, like Barry, it has happened at, at one.
One university drive.
Yeah.
It's hard to understand you, Jonathan, um, much more than, I mean, I see you on quite a few Zooms these days and you, you're in a different place or something because I, I've never been able to understand.
I was trying to get away from the sound of my children in the background and, uh, I'm going to have to buy a, a new camera and, and, and mic, I think.
Okay. Um.
Off that bridge.
I don't have anything else now.
All right, Karen?
So from the picture, I'm also trying to understand the sidewalk, the 10 foot sidewalk. Is that right smack next to the, the road? There's no strip between it. I was trying to see that on the.
So this is the existing where my, if you can follow my cursor, that's the existing. This here, this wider one. That's the proposed 10 foot wide. So a little landing here.
I, I don't think we're on the same page. Are we?
Yeah, the, the curve.
Yeah, yeah, okay, okay. Sorry, sorry. Yep, yep, I see it.
And maybe I'll go back up so you can see. This is probably a better representation. See how you've got the sidewalk that exists and then internal to that interior. And to the site, you've got this wider one and then kind of pull offs for each of those different commercial spaces.
Okay, great. Good, nice.
Bruce?
I just wanted to, uh, thanks, Doug. Uh, not so much me, although I would join in, but I wasn't the person who talked about it, but, uh, I, I think it might've been you, Doug, or it might've been Johanna and, or, or maybe Lawrence, I'm not sure. But there was some conversation about the, uh, that, uh, front area, the, the, the nose at the, uh, very point of the building and the landscaping and the finish and so forth. And, and as Tom said, when he was, uh, uh, re, reintroducing that, that they've made, uh, that they've adjusted that. And I guess I'm curious to whether the the, the members of the board who were interested or concerned that it wasn't perhaps as salubrious as it might have been. Uh, do we agree that it's, uh, feels good now?
Uh. Jesse?
I, I think I raised that point. Um, and yeah, I think it's a pretty good adjustment. Um, my main comment was that it was not forest in the first iteration. And now it looks like that's brick and which could be. And I, I totally understand your comment that you don't know who's in there yet, so you don't want to be too prescriptive. That makes sense to me. So yeah, I think it's a, it's a good improvement.
Yeah, and I had also commented about the facade at that corner. This is the, this is the rendering where I didn't read it as being yellow brick. Um, it's, looks pretty gray to me, but, uh, I'll take your word for it that it's yellow. Uh, and I think it looks better and, um, the plaza looks good. Karen?
Yeah, I want to thank for using brick and making such an effort to make the outside look attractive in New England and contemporary. So, thank you.
All right. Bruce?
Um, this is probably a good view to raise the question about the, uh, screening on the top of the building and whether it's solid or whether it's, uh, um, semi-transparent or what have you. I, I think that was in the, you know, development report or maybe the, uh, the proposed conditions, but I think there was a, uh, uh, it was in the development report, that's right. It was issues to be considered and a question to be raised or a question that the staff thought we might want to raise was uh, how do we think about this screening? And I think it was relevant, related to that top, what looks like about a five foot, uh, screen that's set back. And, uh, I thought at this point, since it'll come up, just tell us what it is and describe how you're, how, how, how you're treating it.
It's, uh, the same or similar, uh, metal siding. They, most of the companies that make the metal siding products also make it in a slightly brighter morning, Bruce, can you hear me?
If, if, if Tom knows the answer, it would be easier for Tom to.
So it's, it's the same or similar to what's going to be the metal siding and it's going to be, uh, like a fence, so a solid um, fence without the slats of the spaces.
Okay. Thank you. I'll get my hand down.
All right. Um, I'll go to the public, uh, any comments from the public at this hearing about this project? Not seeing any hands raised. Um, board members. Is it, is it, uh, does anybody have any objections to where this design is and uh, are we, are we basically in support of the site plan review? All right, I'm seeing.
I, I'm, I'm, I'm ready to move on.
I'm sorry, Bruce?
I think I'm, I'm, I think I'm ready to move on.
Okay.
I mean, move on to reviewing findings and, and.
Right, right. Well. Good, then why don't we do that? Um. Nate, are you able to take us through the findings and conditions?
Uh, I will be able to in about five minutes and I could do it now. I just, I wouldn't be able to share my screen.
Okay. Um. Well, let's see, what could we do for five minutes?
We could start, if someone else could share the screen, we can walk through them. I don't, I don't. I think we start with findings if we.
Have the findings and conditions available to share?
We should. Mm-hmm.
And, and Doug, if you wish, I, I'm prepared to read them because I know, uh, Chris or Nate used to do that.
That reminds me, Bruce, you wanted to talk about the affordable units?
It comes up in the, uh, in the, uh, in, in the, in the draft conditions. There's two pages of it, but there's, yes, I, I, okay, there's one that I've found a little perplexing and, and actually concerning. And it was the, it was the suggested condition that would have at least, it would have one of the affordable units on the upper floor having, uh, uh, a, a deck or a, 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 a kind of a porch access. And I, and I, and I, and relevant to the section in, in article 15. And I went and read through article 15 a bit and found out where I think it would probably, uh, where we might conclude that that was appropriate. But it seems to me that where is article 15? And I think the intent here is that we want to make the affordable units comparable is the word that's used to the other, say, the market rate units. And it seemed to me that since there are only four units that have got a landing space, and that's a kind of a premium, uh, uh, feature. It seemed to me unreasonable to ask the applicant to make one of those four available to an affordable unit. Because I would think the argument would be, one of the ways in which we can afford to make units affordable is by having the market capacity to get a, a, um, a premium for some, for these four units. And that's going to help create affordability. And I don't think it's reasonable to say that in, in the quest of comparability, that one of them, one of the affordable units should also have a deck access because to be comparable to the other units in the development or the other 74 of them, which don't have deck access. I think that's where we are finding comparability and that some of the units are different and special. And this is, uh, appropriate, I think, because that's how we afford to create this level of affordability because the market rates are underwriting them. So I, I take issue with the, with the proposition that that should be a find, that should be a condition.
Mm-hmm, okay. Nate, uh, did you have any thoughts about that?
I mean, the board can find that that's okay. I think, you know, speaking with the building commissioner, he said, well, what, you know, if, uh, if some, if market units have certain amenities, then, you know, proportionally, the affordable unit should have them. So you know, even if it was only a few that have the deck, then, you know, a minimum of one affordable could have a deck, you know, same thing if they had ground level patios or you know, something else. And so, but the board can find otherwise. Uh, similarly, the three and four bedroom units, the board might find that three bedroom units are sufficient. You don't have to have four bedroom affordable units. Similarly, the three and four bedroom units, the board might find that three bedroom units are sufficient. You don't have to have four bedroom affordable units. And you can just make that a part of the conditions and findings. But, you know, I just wanted to raise it as part of discussion.
Okay. All right. All right. Nate, we will continue with Pam's screen until you're at a position where you can share your screen. Um. Pam, why don't you scroll up just a little bit and Bruce, I think you volunteered to read these, at least to start, and we can trade off.
I think I can do that from here. Um. The board found under section eleven point two four of the zoning bylaw, site plan reviewers follows. Eleven point two four zero zero. The project is in conformance with all appropriate provisions of the zoning bylaw with the exception of the variance required for dimensional regulations to allow for a fifty-nine foot uh, building height. The zoning board of appeals granted the variance on March seventh, two thousand and twenty-four to reduce the additional lot area per unit from four thousand square feet to two thousand five hundred. The one sixty parking spaces provoked proposed for this project rather than the one ninety-three spaces required by the zoning bylaw seven uh triple zero and seven point zero zero four is are adequate to meet the demand of the project uh is in uh as it is in close proximity to the public transport and the shared use path. The project advances many goals of the master plan by concentrating housing and mixed-use development in an area that is close to services and transportation options. But that's eleven point two four zero.
There were two sort of typos that Bruce stumbled on there, Pam. The first one was in the after the seven triple zero and zero zero four.
Mm hmm.
Is should be an R, A R E. And um.
Okay.
There's probably a and then the end of that same line.
As as the project is in close proximity, is adequate to meet the demand as the project. I think I stumbled in reading. I I don't think that's a stumble in text in writing. Eleven point two four.
Well, if I could, just one more, fifty-nine point five feet.
Oh.
And that second line is fifty-nine feet. We need fifty-nine point five.
Right.
Well, that was rather important. Thank you, Tom. Eleven point two four zero one. Count amenities and abutting properties will be protected because detrimental or offensive actions are not planned for this site. Eleven point two four zero two, abutting properties will be protected from detrimental site characteristics resulting from the proposed use. Lighting will be downcast and will not shine onto adjacent properties. Stormwater management will be improved from the existing conditions and there are no visually offensive features.
Okay, Pam, can you scroll up a little bit? Great.
Uh. Uh. Hold on.
Eleven point two four oh three.
Three, okay. Adequate recreational facilities, open space and amenities will be provided because there are because there will be recreational spaces within the building. There are outdoor space plazas and there is multi-use. There is a multi-use path along University Drive that connects uh to the Nor Nomotac rail train.
Ranch, yeah.
Thank you. Eleven point two four one zero, not applicable. And do I need to go further than not applicable? I suppose I should. There are no unique or important natural, historic or scenic fixtures, features on the site. The parcels that have been previously developed and none of the existing buildings, actually that should be, is historic. By my standard. I know The New Yorker and half the publications of the planet don't agree with me, but it should be none is historic. Eleven point two four one one. Proposed methods of refuse disposal are described in the management plan. They are considered to be adequate. Solid waste materials shall be stored inside the building and the building and transported and in the building and transported off the site. There are no dumpsters proposed. Eleven point two four one two. The ability of the proposed sewage disposal and water supply systems to serve the proposed site is considered to be adequate. The property is connected to town sewer and water systems via connections on Amity Street. Eleven point two four one.
Whoops.
Oh, no, I went just a little too far, Bruce. Sorry about that.
Okay. The ability of the proposed drainage system within and adjacent to the site to handle any increased runoff resulting from the development is considered to be adequate. The previous iteration of the project was approved by the conservation commission. Eleven point two four one four. Provision of of adequate landscaping is satisfactory. The landscape plan submitted includes landscape buffers along the street frontage and a landscape island in the parking lot and natural vegetation in the wetland will be restored with native plantings. I guess, by the way, if anybody thinks that what I'm reading is not correct or non-satisfactory, we should say so. I I'll I'll interrupt myself if I think that's true, but so far I'm good.
Bruce, I haven't seen any hands go up. Well, hold on. Go ahead, Jonathan.
Real real quick. Correcting or I don't know if it's a correction, but the the previous item, I think the conservation commission has reviewed this version of the project and approved it, not not one of the previous ones. Is that correct, Tom?
That is correct.
Oh, that would be good to say too. Okay, has so.
I got it.
So we we got that.
Yeah. Eleven point two four one five. The erosion control plan will be reviewed, will be reviewed by the conservation commission.
Has been reviewed and approved.
Has been reviewed and approved by the conservation commission.
Okay, hold on, hold on, hold on.
So these are the findings and conditions that we will pro most likely approve on the nineteenth of March. So they should be written such that conservation commission is finished.
You're breaking my heart, Doug.
What's that?
I said, you're breaking my heart, Doug.
I know, I know.
Approved. Okay.
Actually, that's wrong because the the ZBA is the group that has yet to go. You are finished with conservation, right?
Correct, yes.
Correct.
All right, so I'm incorrect.
Eleven. Whoop, not too, that's good enough. Well, good. Eleven point two four one six. Adjacent properties will be protected from the intrusion of various types of nuisances, including air and water pollution, flood, noise, odor, dust, vibration through appropriate site and structural structural, structured design and the use of appropriate design and materials for containment, ventilation, filtering, screening, soundproofing, sound dampening and other similar solutions. The use of the properly mixed and use in retail property, mixed use in retail is not expected to produce air and water pollution. The storm drainage system has been designed to prevent flooding. Noise from noise within the building will be contained by the building's outer walls and windows. Noise from within the site will be contained by the five-story building sections. Odor is not expected to be produced in the new building. Dust or vibration, dust and vibration will not be produced by the finished building and will be controlled during construction by requirements of the construction logistics plan. Eleven point two four one seven. Protection of adjacent properties by minimizing intrusion of lighting has been determined to be satisfactory. A lighting plan and photometric plan have been permitted and all exterior lighting is shown to be downcast and the dark sky compliant. Cut sheets have been provided for all fixtures and are considered to be satisfactory. Okay, I'm good with that. Eleven point two four one eight. There is a small stream that runs through the southern portion of the site that is in the FPC zoning district. This stream is governed by section three point two two of the zoning bylaw. The stream has a twenty-five foot jurisdictional area from the top bank. This small FPC zoning district is contained in a large wetland area that was part of the previous cons, is part of the conservation commission approval. Delete the word previous.
Yeah.
I assume. The conservation, something.
Don't we want to just delete this sentence, this last one? The commission will review that.
Yes, I believe we do.
I think that just goes away.
Pam, you good?
Got it.
Okay. Eleven point two four one nine. That notice of intent was filed and with the conservation commission and an order of conditions was issued by the commission at their meeting December twenty-four. December fourth, two thousand and twenty-four is. Okay, I'm gonna keep reading and see what we get to here. Um, for for a previous iteration of the project while the revised plans were reviewed by the conservation commission on March uh twelfth, sorry, on February twelfth, twenty twenty-five and 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 we probably should say and were.
I think you can just go back, if I if I may, to after an order of conditions was issued by the commission at their February twelfth, two thousand twenty-five uh hearing or on February twelfth. You can eliminate the whole second part. So where it says December fourth, twenty twenty-four, that should be February twelfth, twenty twenty-five.
Yeah.
Twenty five. Meeting, period.
Perfect.
Okay, and and get rid of everything else.
Yes.
Okay, so it it will just read as this. A notice of intent was filed with the conservation commission and an order of conditions was issued by the commission at their two twelve, twenty twenty-five meeting. That's it. Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you much.
Eleven twenty-four twenty. The site is located in the BL district. However, the project is not located in the National Historic Register District and the proposal is not likely to have significant impact on its surroundings as the design is in keeping with the density use of the density and use of the area. Therefore, the design principles and standards in section uh three point two oh four oh and three point two four one, oh, sorry, three point two four zero one were not applied to the project. Eleven point two four two one. The development is reasonably consistent with the respect with respect to setbacks, placement of parking, landscaping and entrances and exits with surrounding buildings and development. Parking will be provided behind the building in an open lot. Um, one and two-way, one and two.
One, two.
One two-way driveway and Amity Street will be retained for the access and a new two-way drive is proposed on University Drive. Um, eleven point two four two two. The building site avoids to the extent feasible impact on steep slopes, floodplains, scenic views, grade changes and wetlands. Eleven point two four two three, not applicable. There is one building proposed for this site. Eleven point two four two four. Screening is proposed for electric meters near the Amity Street entrance and for mechanical features on the roof. I think we saw both of those. Eleven point two four three zero. The site has been designed to provide for the convenience and safety of pedestrian pedestrians and there's a little bit of it.
Yeah.
You got it?
Got it.
Movement both within the site and in relation to adjoining ways and properties. There will be vehicular access onto the property from the two from two driveways. Internal drive aisles will be twenty-four feet wide for two-way traffic. A sidewalk with crossings is proposed to bring pedestrians safely from the parking into the building. There are direct pedestrian connections to the sidewalk on the front of the building.
Okay, scroll down.
Eleven point two four three one. We're getting there. The location and number of curb cuts is designed to minimize the turning movements and hazardous exits and entrances, crosswalks, hazardous entrances, sorry, hazardous exits and entrances. Crosswalks are provided between the buildings and across curb cuts. Eleven point two four three two. The location and design of parking spaces, bicycle racks and drive aisles are provided in a safe and convenient manner. Bike racks will be provided at plazas and entryways into the building and accessible parking spaces are provided on sidewalks near entrances. Do we want to make any reference to the covered biking in the building, which I believe was a later addition?
Well, we're, we will be approving the the plans as submitted, which include the.
Yeah, it's a finding, that's all. I just wonder, do we, we could find that because it's it's now available to be found. Moving on. Eleven point two four three three, not applicable. Eleven point two four three four, not applicable. No commercial or business property is located across University Drive or Amity Street from the site. Eleven point two.
Uh, what's what does that mean?
I think it's relative to that particular. I don't know, we we we.
I mean, there is commercial, there is commercial property across University Drive.
Oh, of course, I was thinking, yes, okay. Nate, do you want to comment on this?
I'm happy if before Nate jumps in, I can just tell you, it it says eleven point two four three four is where possible driveways located in commercial and business districts shall be located opposite each other. So eleven point two four three four, I think it's talking about driveways. And I think the point is that there aren't any commercial uh or other business driveways located across.
So in that case, why don't we just say no? No driveways.
Nate, commercial or business property exits.
Commercial or business are.
Yeah.
Are present across the streets.
Um.
Pam, does that make sense?
Um, hold on a second. So let's see, no commercial or business property access. Accesses are present across University Drive or Amity Street from the site. Is that what we're trying to say?
I think so.
Uh, accesses.
Tom, does the does your southern or the only curb cut on University Drive? Is that opposite the, is that aligned with the exit coming out of the little mall across the way with that has the hangar?
It's offset here.
Oh, it's offset, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and you wouldn't even, you don't probably even own that far south.
Right. And if we do, there's wetlands there and circulation and 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 so.
Right. Okay.
So are present or would we say are located, are loc? Go ahead.
Um, I I think we we can say it is. There are no there are no commercial or business exits on Amity Street. And it is not feasible for the exit on University Drive to align with the exit on the nearest exit on the other side of the of the street.
Of University Drive.
You gotta say that again. Okay.
So.
There are no commercial or business exits along Amity Street.
On Amity Street.
Okay.
And it is not feasible for the exit on University Drive to align with the opposite exit period.
Um. You drive to align. Period. Okay.
With with the opposite exit.
With the opposite. Okay.
Actually, opposite should really be nearest with the nearest exit because it's it's not.
Nearest.
Tom, you're the wordsmith in the group, so.
I think you did great.
Do you want me to, do you want me to read what I have or you you want me to just?
Why don't you read it back to us?
Okay, I'm gonna give it my best here. There are no commercial or business exits on Amity Street. And it is not feasible for the exit on University Drive to align with the nearest exit. I think I missed something.
Well, you could say with the nearest exit on the opposite side of the street.
Yeah.
On the opposite side. That's what I missed, on the opposite side.
The 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 finding is is always to be read in relation to the 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 context in which we have to make the finding in the zoning bylaw. And what we did once before was we put that in italics in the findings and then we made our findings in plain text. And we're missing the italicized versions of this, but it doesn't seem to matter because we know where to find them if we need them. And Pam, I need the last two.
Oh.
I stole your screen, Pam, sorry.
So do I have to go back? And share it again? Here we go.
Yes.
Yeah.
All right, sorry about that. And that's okay, Tom. I I don't mind. Okay. There you go, Mr. Coldem.
Okay, I think we're at eleven point two. Okay, I think we're at eleven, eleven point two, eleven point two four three-five. Which is not applicable. Eleven point two four three-six, a traffic impact assessment prepared by Stan Tech Consulting Services Inc. Dated May fifteen, twenty twenty-four. Was submitted, I, I'm assuming Tom and others will correct if that, if that date is wrong, I assume it's correct. Was submitted with the site plan review applications. The project is not anticipated to have significant impacts. To traffic operations. And finally, eleven point two three three-seven, given the results of the traffic impact assessment, the requirement for a traffic impact report. As described in section eleven two four three-seven of the zoning bylaw will be waived.
Yes.
Will be waived. Can be waived.
Is waived.
Yeah.
Is.
This is a finding, this is.
Yeah, we're finding, we're finding that it can be waived, right?
Yeah.
And then, and then the, the, the conditions waive it. Whatever. I think that is it.
Wait, so now I'm not clear. Is it, is it gonna change to is, is waived?
I would think it should say can be waived, but.
Can be.
Only one out of seven here.
Can be.
Nate?
Nate is back, I saw him.
Do the conditions refer to the waiver of the traffic impact report?
Well, the way the, the zoning law is written, it says a traffic impact report is required. If the, um, proposed development does, you know, four things, and so. We could say that, given the results of the traffic impact assessment, you know, there is no requirement to submit a traffic impact report. You know, as opposed to saying waive, you say there is no requirement.
Can be. Perfect then.
So you could say, given the results of the traffic impact assessment. A traffic impact report as described, yada, yada, is not required.
Right.
So remove the words, the requirement for, from the first line. And at the end of the second line, we remove the words will be waived and replace it with is not required.
Okay.
Uh, Fred, I see your hand.
Uh, yeah, I was gonna suggest is being waived.
I know. This is a finding. We're not finding that it's being waived, we're finding that it is unnecessary.
And we're saying the report is not required. That seems pretty straightforward.
I agree.
All right, Bruce, thank you for reading. Uh, now we'll go to the conditions. Nate, do you want to take over the screen, or do you want to keep, uh, Pam, uh, at, at the ready?
Now I get, I can, uh.
If you had the word document, then we can edit right on the word document. This is PDF.
Yeah. I have, is that, is that, is that visible for everyone?
Yes.
Works for me. And do you want to read it, or do you want one of us to read?
So I think first we have the waivers, and then we have, you know, the conditions. Uh, and so some of these waivers may or may not, you know, we, so, you know, kind of like the development application report and the findings, this was written before. Uh, some of the revisions. So there are a few waivers here. Uh, the number of parking spaces required for residential uses. Seven point zero zero four, number of parking spacers required for retail office or similar uses. Seven point one zero, design standards for parking spaces. Seven point one one, landscape standards. And then section eight point three two one, size of a monument sign in the BL zoning district. And so I explained the last one, you know, sent you that whole curved wall out front could be considered part of the sign. It has, you know, la, um, you know, raised lettering on it now. And so, and speaking with the building commissioner. You know, really, we're not gonna say, well, it's just the size of the lettering. Typically, there's a backing to the sign, and so. It's easier to say that that whole curved wall could be considered part of the sign display as opposed to, you know, some portion of it around the lettering, right? Um, and this has been done before when they have a similar sign on a, on a wall, uh, so.
So do we need to add the traffic in, the traffic report to this list?
I know, I, I think the way the finding was written is not required now, it's not, it's not a waiver.
Okay, all right, good.
I've got three more, uh, based on the development application report. Seven point one oh three. Which is parking closer, uh, than eight feet from a building.
But it's closer than eight feet to a building, right?
To a building, yeah, exactly. Uh, seven one oh four. Um, allow compact spaces for up to fifty percent. Of standard parking spaces, so allow compact spaces for up to fifty percent of standard. Parking spaces. Then seven point two zero zero. Allow shared parking between peak parking needs generated by onsite uses. Occurring, uh, so uses occurring at different times. Think that does it. Thank you.
Okay. Any comments from anybody, uh, in, at the board here about, uh, all these waivers? Don't see any hands. Go ahead, Nate, let's go down.
Sure, so in the conditions, you know, the things that are bold and italics are somewhat tailored to this project or application and the rest are. Standards. I don't know if we want to, you know, Bruce had asked that, there'd be some. This, you know, there'd be some way to tell, just so we, if we don't want to read all the conditions, it's up to the board now, um. Doug, I don't know if you, if I should start with one or just read the number three.
Well, I guess, um. You know, I think if you want to just kind of give a brief mention of, of the ones that are not italicized and then read the. Read the ones that are old in, as they are specifically written.
Sure, you know, so one and two, you know, the development should be managed or designed in accordance with the plans that are submitted and approved on whatever date. Number three, uh, there shall be an onsite. Manager who resides as a full-time resident in one of the units. And shall be available during normal business hours and available as one of the emergency contacts outside of normal business hours. And so.
Um, Tom, do you find that that's an easy thing to do, to find, to, to have somebody who lives onsite? Or is the workforce that typically would be, uh, an onsite manager somebody? Is it hard to find somebody who's willing to live there?
Oh, great question, Barry. I'm gonna ask you, um, to, to chime in, but I think it was a discussion between Barry and Gail who said. We want to have an onsite resident manager here. So not only does Barry manage it, but I think for a project like this. Given the commercial uses, uh, in the number of residential units, the number of bedrooms, I think it makes sense. Barry, is that fair to say?
Yes, I think Gail and I decided that this project is big enough and should have the attention of somebody there full-time. Um, which will probably perform some janitorial services as well as being. Available for nighttime calls, weekend calls, all that. We are also always available, Gail and I, but. Um, I think to answer your question, Doug, it's gonna depend. We're gonna do, have to. Uh, probably, uh, comp an apartment for them. Uh, and pay them a little besides that. So, but I, we really think it's important in this site project.
Okay, all right.
So we think that condition's, uh, workable then, Tom and Barry?
Yeah, I, I think so.
Yep. Number four is, you know, any substantial changes would come back to the board for review.
Yep.
Five, we say landscaping shall be installed in accordance with the plans. What's added here and what I think actually should be added to actually any, every condition become standard is a minimum height at time of planting. And so, you know, not necessarily what happens at this plan, but we've seen, we, we, someone will say, well, we're planting. This type of shrub for screening and they plant it and it's, you know, nine inches and it'll take, you know, twenty years before it actually gets to three feet or something. And so. I'm saying the minimum height of any shrub at time of planting shall be three feet as this is needed for screening. So. We could change that, but I do think it's important to start having a minimum height, uh.
All right, Nate, I see Bruce has got his hand up.
Yeah, I, I was, what he, it, it says as this is needed for screening. You shouldn't have said if this is needed for screening, because we'll be planting. That are, that are not needed for screening, uh, that don't have to be three feet high.
All right.
And I guess maybe I'd have just one comment on that. If you look at, and I can bring it up, the, um, landscape plan. So we've had the landscape architect actually loo- look at it. There are a whole host of different minimum measurements. And so it's like, you know, two to three foot height. Um, it's like one inch caliper, it's. You know, depending upon what is being planted. Um, and so our request would be, and, and, I mean, I can bring it up so you can see like the. Act, the sheer number of plantings that are going to occur here. And I don't know in. You know, outside of the electrical meters, I don't know how much screening is actually needed for this project. So I would just, you know, we may be back here at another project and we say, oh my gosh, we need higher, you know, plans. Um, for this, I would suggest that we rely on what's specked in the landscape plan. Um. Unless you want to have some additional piece for the, the electric meters.
Uh-huh. Um. So we're really just talking about the planting that serves as screening with this sentence. Um. And, and it's really just at the electric meters, right?
If everybody agrees, that's, yes, that's all I can think of for actual screening. If that's what the intent is, you've got zero problem.
Yeah, I mean, sometimes, for instance, people will say, oh, we're gonna put plantings at the edge of a parking lot, and they go and they install, like I said, like, you know. A, a twelve to fifteen inch tall evergreen shrub that won't even block headlights for five years. And so. Uh, you know, for here, it might just be the electrical, um, meters, um.
Yeah, well, why don't we just say the, the shrubs that provide screening at the electrical meters. Shall be at least three feet tall when installed.
Well, this captures something else if it's not, you know, say there is, you know, we can look at. Um, if there's anything else that needs to be screened.
Okay, well, then the minimum height of any shrub serving a screening function shall be at least three feet tall.
Can I ask just like a practical implementation? Uh, who's making that decision? How is their predictability, et cetera?
Yeah, this, well, so this becomes an enforceable condition that the inspectors would use, right? And so. You know, it'd be that if they go in there and they, you know, you can, although it says two to three feet, Tom, I get what you're saying. You know, I'd say, well, you can select, say, three feet. And like a one and a half, half inch caliper tree is different than saying a two-foot shrub because. A one and a half inch caliper tree has a height, say, of eight to ten feet or something, it's a certain size. Oftentimes, we'll approve shrubs or understore plantings without anything. And like I said, someone could come in and plant a wist. Right? And not actually plant anything more than what, what is shown. So. If we, you know, this is saying at time of planting, it shall be three feet. I mean, we can delete it if we think the planting plan, uh, here is sufficient enough, right? Their landscape plan act, ha- has the heights if we think that's good. Like I said, I, I think this should actually become kind of a standard part of the condition, just so we're, you know, we make sure that anything that's supposed to be. Used for screening has an adequate height at time of planting.
Uh, Nate, I, my, uh, my editor self would really like to have the screening closer to the word shrub. Um, so I would like the minimum height of any shrub.
Right.
Providing a screening function. To be at least three feet tall at the time of planting.
Right.
Period.
And Bruce, I see your hand is up still.
Yep, Bruce.
Um. I, I, I think I was just gonna say that, uh, um, we could rely on the planting plan for this, that's logical. But I noticed that repeatedly through these conditions, we are asking for all sorts of things like that it has to comply with the Massachusetts. Architectural Access Board and, and various other things. So I think Nate, if you want this to kind of be a prompt. Uh, and to kind of reside in these conditions to become more, more general, then I think we should keep it. Uh, as you've written it and recognize that the, uh. That in this case, it's really only the, uh, uh, the, the, the.
Electric meters.
The electric meters that need screening, and I think that's correct and, and so forth. So this is just another one of those redundant phrases. Um, but it's not doing any harm, I don't think, uh, Tom may disagree.
And, you know, it could be conflicting with the landscape plan. Which we've, you know, so if it does, I, I'd rather have, I mean.
Well, if it does, it's conflicting in the way we want it to be conflicted, right?
Right, so maybe notwithstanding the, the heights stated on the landscape plan. Then the minimum height shall be at least three feet, but.
Oh, I, I, I would just go with what you've got there. I think it's pretty clear that that's what we're trying to and, and, uh.
I mean, the only thing I will say, the, there's a vault on, near the entry from University Drive that doesn't show any screening, and is that, I just.
It's underground, sorry Nate, I should have responded and I didn't. It's subsurface.
Yeah, okay.
Good, good catch though.
Tom.
Are we good with this?
Tom, do you object to this?
No, as long as, I mean, what we're hearing is, uh, electric meter transformer particularly. Make sure they're at least three feet, no problem.
Okay.
Thank you.
Fred?
Uh. Yeah, I would say, uh, rather than to be, I would say shall be at least because we're stating a condition.
Good point. Okay, Nate.
All right, uh, the SPR, you know, approval expires within two years. Any work once it started shall be completed within twenty-four months. Uh, if they need to extend it, they can. Uh, we're requiring an A and R plan be submitted to combine the, the lots. And that happened before the issuance of the building permit. So, you know, there's, um, a few lots, separate lots there now. Uh, building exterior and site improvements. The town engineer and building commissioner, you inspect the construction of entry driveways and paved areas. All utility connections shall be underground. We say all exterior lighting shall be dark sky compliant and downcast. And we added, there shall be no uplighting of signs or landscape features. Uh, and so at one point, it looked like there had been some uplighting, but, you know, I, I don't think there is now. Again, this could become a part of a standard condition. Fred, I see your hands raised.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, the item nine, I think it should be for conformance to town standards.
Oh, yeah.
Got that. Thanks, Fred. Um, number twelve, uh, except as shown on the approved plans, any air conditioning units, communication devices. Uh, shall be screened from view and noise muffled with fencing, plantings or other suitable materials. So, um, that's provided in the plans. I, I, number thirteen, the ballers showing the ten-foot walkway along University Drive shall be removable. Now, I, I, you know, I don't know if that's the case, it didn't look like it on the construction details, but I just, we can talk about it, and if we want to remove it, we can. Or change the condition, but.
So I'll say they're not, but Barry, do you have any reason why they should, they couldn't be removable? So, yeah, that's fine. If you want them removable, we can make them removable.
Not a problem.
I'm just thinking for ease of any, say, snow plowing or something, or, you know, if the town ends up doing some of that. Um, so the exterior signs, I'm proposing to remove that. Um, because, uh, you know, the further one.
Waiver.
And the, and the other one, there, there's other conditions out. And the and the other one, there's other conditions that address that. So, uh, fifteen, the applicant shall provide to the planning board for review and approval at a public meeting, the final details and specifications. For any amenities such as bike racks, site furniture, benches prior to installation. I think we, they showed most of it, but maybe not some of it. So. This is, we have this condition actually in other um. Permits. Number sixteen, the applicant shall provide to the planning board an updated parking agreement with Emress Public House at Florida University Drive. Detailing how the requirements of the special permit will be met going forward.
And I guess my only comment there would be something on the lines, Nate, of like, or that no agreement is required.
And what is prompting this? And what's the relationship to the Amherst Public House?
So, Florida University Drive, Barry owns that as well. Uh, you may recall, like, it might have been like twenty twenty, twenty nineteen, twenty eighteen. A restaurant, Savannah's was going in there at the time. Uh, folks were worried about the parking volume, and so the solution to that was really to like do valet parking. Uh, I don't think it was ever used, and that there's a parking agreement to allow folks to park across the street at twenty five thirty five. Again, I don't know that it's been used. So what we have to do is just go through the ZBA to modify forty University Drive. Their special permit to eliminate. Uh, that agreement. And so that's what, we haven't done that yet. Um, but we're we're going to.
All right, do you have any objection to the way this is written?
My only comment would be, like I said, like if this this anticipates there being an updated parking agreement, which. There may be, uh, but I.
So you want to add, or that, or in.
Or alternative, or alternative solution has been achieved, something like that.
Reporting, reporting that no agreement is required.
Yep, yep. As a, as a practical matter, right, if. Um, if nothing is required, then we'll, the planning department will already know. Um, based upon going through the ZBA process.
Okay.
All right. Uh, seventeen, the applicant shall return to the planning board at a public meeting. Within one year after the final certificate of occupancy and present information about parking usage and demand. Including adequacy of parking for non-residential spaces. The board may ask the applicant to return again after the non-residential spaces have been occupied. And so in the past, we've done this with some other projects where certain uses haven't been. Determined. Again, it's something the board can discuss now.
And so this is really just for our information to find out how things are working?
Right, yeah.
Okay.
Uh, building interior and use, uh, the building shall meet all codes. The total number of dwelling units to be constructed shall be limited to seventy eight units, one studio, five one beds, one bath, thirty, two bed, one bath. Nine, three bedroom and two bath and thirty three, four bedroom, two bath. The building shall not exceed five stories and fifty nine and a half feet. And so twenty one is, you know, um, another one, the principal use shall remain mixed use, uh, remain a mixed use building. Include a combination of dwelling units and a non-residential use occupying at least thirty percent of the first floor.
Um, number nineteen. So say they build the building and five years from now. It's clear the market for four bedroom units is not very good. And they want to split a unit in two. Do we have to change these conditions?
Well, they'd come back and present to the board and say, is that one, you know, if it's one unit, is that a de minimis change? Or if they're changing all their four bedrooms, that might be sufficient sufficient enough that they have to amend their site plan, right? I mean, if they're going from. But it is seventy eight units and now they're adding. You know, sixteen more units.
But the site plan is not about the interior of the building.
Well, it's also, it's about the number of units, right? In our, in the. Um, for mixed use building and for site planets, you know, we have to know that there are a certain. Bedroom count or bedroom size and breakdown. So you can't have more than fifty percent of one bedroom size.
Okay.
Uh, you know, I don't know if if anyone else has any comments about that in terms of nineteen, you know, if we were to condition differently or.
Well, I mean, it seems sort of repetitive because we've approved the plans. So what's the point?
Yeah, the point here is, you know, a building, whatever is in conditions becomes enforceable and it's reported. And it's, to me, it's easier than to find, right? So we're not going to say, well, oh, we refer to the plans. And let's go try to find the unit breakdown on the plans. We refer to the conditions in the permit. And so, what we want to have as conditions to be enforceable and to be used in the future, we'd have them as conditions, so.
Okay.
Twenty two and twenty three, you know, twenty two, the building shall meet all, as Bruce said, the mass architectural access access board requirements. Uh, they should be registered in terms of the residential rental property by law. Twenty four.
And 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 those are. Rel- I mean. Twenty two is needed to. Make sure that the building inspector refers to M A B when he issues the building permit?
Right, or right, if there's ever any, if there's any, if a com- if there's a complaint made. And there's questions about it, we can refer to this permit or to what the inspectors find.
All right.
I agree, so this, I mean, this one's a little redundant. Uh, you know, the other one. Uh, you know, some of them maybe aren't, but you know, really that has to meet. These, so we always, we say up above, it has to meet all other codes too here. I mean, if we wanted to.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, somewhat, you know. Redundant. Uh, twenty four, there shall be security measures in place such as. Key or FOB access to the elevators and stairs so that only residents and not the general public have access to the residential spaces in the building.
Okay.
Uh, commercial retail, non-residential tenant spaces.
Um, Doug, if I may, on that one, uh, it says, and 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 not the general public. Um, do, does anybody want to be specific enough to say not the general public or. Uh, tenants of the uh, non-residential spaces? Or.
I mean, we could delete, we could delete the parenthetical.
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, I'm asking whether, whether, because the general public, uh, the 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 resident, the 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 uh, tenants of the. Non-resident- residential spaces may may perhaps be considered not the general public. And uh, I I I was thinking that it, because you probably want to have key access for the. For the, for the separately. For the uh. Re- the the non-residential spaces as well. Am I getting too, uh?
Oh, if you remove the parenthetical, then you're just saying that only the residents have access to the residential spaces.
Oh, I see what you mean. Yes, 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 that's a good idea.
Do the, do the commercial. Tenants have access to that trash room that's inside the residential area?
You, you think you read my mind. Um. Yeah, uh, Barry Jonathan, is that the? How is trash for non-residential spaces going to be handled? Will there be a separate entrance to the trash room?
Like, do they have to go outside and in the, in the outside door to deposit their trash in the toters there?
Yes, they'll, they'll go through the outside doors and won't be able to go into the unit. Be a keypad inside the trash room to go into the residential. And they won't have a code for that.
So there's a keypad on both sides of that inner door.
Correct.
So this, um. We could remove the the parenthetical and just have it read the way it.
I agree.
All right. Are we good with number twenty four?
Yep.
Twenty five, any use, uh, so for commercial of the non-residential spaces. Any use authorized in the non-residential space at this project site shall be among the uses allowed by right or permitted by site plan review. Or by special permit in the limited business zoning district and shall be required to follow all appropriate permitting. And so that means if, you know, something goes into one of the non-residential spaces. It could be administratively approved unless there are some changes that needs, you know, some oth- some other application.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Uh, marketing lease agreement, any substantial modifications would come back. Um.
Okay.
Work within the right of way. Uh, again, this is kind of standard language, any repairs or improvements. Would be fixed, you know, prior to additions with a final C O. Uh, crosswalks, sidewalks and amenities would be reconstructed to match existing. And all utility work shall follow regulations and permits of the town.
Okay.
Uh, the management plan, we hit, number thirty. The management plan, including supplemental information submitted by the applicant, details parking management as follows. There shall be one hundred and sixty parking spaces, twenty four compact spaces. One hundred and twenty spaces will be reserved to residents and forty spaces will be available for non-residential uses. And shared space for residents. Tenants will be required to register vehicles with property management. In order to obtain a parking sticker, spaces will be numbered and assigned to residents. And the commercial spaces shall be available from eight AM to five PM.
The only comment, the only comment I'd have there is, uh, the one hundred and twenty spaces reserved and forty spaces available. Uh, just that whole, maybe a positive, I'd love to take that out and just. It was more of an example to say, here's what we will likely do. But I think, um, it comes down to management and if there's a. Commercial tenant that says, here's how many parking spaces we need, we need. And we think that we can rent the residential spaces maybe with less because people don't have vehicle, like. I just don't want to get tied into one twenty and forty. So just that. Uh, from the comma after the parenthetical spaces to the comma right before tenants, we would request that, um. Be removed. Yeah, exactly that. And then we're happy to register the vehicles. We're happy to have parking stickers. Uh, Barry, spaces numbered is fine. Yep, spaces numbered is fine, so all of that is okay.
All right, uh, Jesse?
Yeah, I I don't disagree at all. Didn't think our interests are aligned here. I mean, they want the right parking mix for the uses, so. I think that makes a lot of sense.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, Nate. I guess it looks like we're not even halfway through, but are we through most of this? Before you get to the construction boilerplate?
Yeah, so management plan, the rest of this is, you know, boilerplate, snow would be removed, drainage structure is kept clear of snow. Trash pickup and everything during seven AM to seven PM. Except as, you know, provided during emergencies. Um. Move in, move out shall occur during seven AM to seven PM and coordinated to, you know, minimize impacts of multiple moving trucks. Uh, thirty six. Uh, upon change of ownership, if the property is no longer managed by U Drive Amity LLC, the new owner and our manager shall submit a new management plan to the planning board. At a public meeting for its review and approval. The purpose of the meeting shall be for the board to determine whether conditions of the permit are being complied with. Whether any modification to the site plan approval or management plan is required. All right, construction. Thirty seven, a demolition permit shall be issued before demolition takes place. Uh, you know, prior to additions of a building permit, this is thirty eight, a pre-construction meeting shall be scheduled. Um, there should be a written fire management plan. Before they issue the building permit, number thirty nine. Uh, forty was, forty was redundant.
Don't, don't really need to go through all of these.
Yep. So we say the final construction logistics plan shall be provided at the pre-construction meeting and shall cover the following items. So I just say the word final. There was some, something submitted, but. This all gets worked out after the permit. These are all, uh, pretty boilerplate all through here. If there's any questions about up through fifty, you know, those are things we always require. Completion of work, we're saying as-built plans. Uh, you know, digital plants, the town. Uh, fifty five would be new. Construction of the project shall comply with requirements of the town engineer as listed in his letter of. So Jason provided a letter, the town engineer, in relationship to the variance that noted a number of things. Uh, it was relevant to the site plan review, so we can include that here.
Mm-hmm. Bruce?
Might be the appropriate time. I read the Jason's letter and, uh, he talks about. Um, a a pad. That needed, a concrete pad, I think, is a, for for, uh, getting off the bus. Uh, and he's, he says something about it has to be with the. Something area, and I think he meant to say within the area, and I, and I, uh, and I thought that. That, just to be clear, because it's a little confusing, but if you, but if you make it, if if it reads within. Then I think it makes sense. My guess is that that's what he was trying to say in that letter that we are currently discussing. I don't know whether you, we need to, yeah, I don't know whether we need to pull it up. I think we should just, uh, perhaps, uh. Um, Pam, Nate, if you could, uh, have that letter, maybe look at it. Right now and see whether that's not correct, and if so, you could just to deal directly with the town engineer to change that word.
Yeah, no, you, you're saying to have a larger pad, so if someone. Needs it to get off the bus, they had, you know, there's basically a turning radius if they have.
Yeah, I, I understand what he's, but I think I understand what he's saying. It all makes sense. It's just that. The the wording in the letter doesn't communicate exactly what I think he intends to say.
All right.
Okay.
All right, fifty six, fifty seven are, uh, standard two, you know, in terms of what we want for the final certificate in fifty seven. So affordable units, we, uh, you know, this project provides, number fifty eight, provides enough affordable units that some have to be at eighty percent AMI and some at sixty percent. And so that's what the, um, condition fifty eight says. So according to article fifteen, inclusionary zoning of the. Zoning by law, at least twelve percent of the dwelling units, nine units. Shall be and shall remain affordable in perpetuity. According to article fifteen, seven units shall be marketed to eligible households whose annual income may not exceed eighty percent of very median income. Adjusted for household size as determined by HUD. And two units shall be marketed to how eligible households whose annual income may not exceed sixty percent, uh, AMI. And so that. All that language basically just says that.
Okay.
Uh, so the rest of these are in terms of what it, how it meets the definition in the bylaw, and it should be, uh, on the S H I.
Bruce, you have your hand up. Are you?
Yeah, if I get to sixty one, is the unit breakdown for.
Right.
Or units.
And now I do have my hand.
Okay, Bruce.
Um. Uh. I I I would, uh, suggest that we delete, uh, item E, one of the affordable. Oh, one of the affordable units shall be located on the fifth floor, that's fine, but I think and have access to a deck is an unreasonable requirement.
Well, there's not much point in having any part of E if we remove that. Isn't that true?
Yeah, and right now I have four, four bedroom units, which wasn't being proposed. It was more three bedroom. So I think we can talk about what we think is, uh. The right.
Oh, yeah. I I, he, there's a, the, that we have a, we have a plan that, uh, was submitted that shows the distribution of the, uh. Of the units through the building, and there were two comments associated in the development application report. And one of them says that, uh, that that there should be, uh, one of them at least should have deck access. And the other says that, uh, some of them shouldn't be, or they shouldn't be next to stairs. And, uh, I take you see with both of those, uh, requirements, but more specifically with this one here for reasons that I mentioned already. Uh, so I would argue that we delete E out of, uh, number sixty one.
Nate, uh, it sounded like earlier, you, although the the building commissioner was recommending this, it, there's. Not any requirement for it, and it's really up to the discretion of the board.
Right. There's the ability of the board to say that we think, you know, these are the appropriate affordable units.
Okay. Um, so, board members, uh. Do you support Bruce's suggestion or do you oppose it? Karen?
I support Bruce's suggestion for the same reasons that he said. That he explained so well.
All right, uh, Jesse has his thumb up. Yeah, I guess I'm, I'm okay with it, so. I think that's a majority saying. Go ahead and delete it.
And then the other piece to talk about is the number of bedrooms. So, you know, a one, one bedroom, three, two. Three, two bedrooms, you have one, three bedroom and then four, four bedrooms. There was no proposal to have four bedroom units be affordable. You know, I, this is just based on the proportionality of taking, you know, the number of units and then breaking down the twelve percent and doing some rounding. You know, I will, you know, again, I think it's up to the board. I have heard sometimes that four bedrooms are hard to occupy, given the number of.
That was, Bruce, are you?
I was going to ask, I guess I was going to ask whether the housing, the Affordable Housing Trust has ventured an opinion here. Because I would imagine in town, that would be the organization that would have the. The clearest knowledge of what the affordable housing market dynamics is and whether there's a shortage of four bedroom units or not. So my question is, perhaps of Nate. Do we have any indication from the Housing Trust, the Affordable Housing Trust, that four bedroom? Units should be, we should take the opportunity of putting four bedroom units. On the Affordable Housing Register in this building.
No, I, this, this hasn't been discussed by the trust. And so, you know, we, we could ask them. I know in the past, even the housing authority has said that four bedroom units are hard to occupy. Because, you know, if you. You know, you may have to have a minimum household size of so many occupants, so that's pretty high.
Yeah, I mean, that's our, just, I'll chime in, that's our thought as well. So we, we loaded it with three one-bed, three-two-bed, three-three beds. That's our experience, just really in practice of what is filled. And so that, that would be our suggestion. However, you want to break it down, I'm fine with the way Nate suggests, like. The sixty percent AMI, that sixty and eighty, I think that's fine. But we would say three one beds, three two beds, three three beds. And we're almost certain that they're going to be filled, which is like, that's really the, the point of this. So we, we were, we. Did not include four bedrooms for the reason that we're talking about right now.
All right. Any expressions of support for the mix that Tom has proposed? Or any objections, any, any comments about that? Bruce?
I, I think I would go with what Tom's suggesting because in the room, I think. There is, that's where the greater experience is, which is why I asked whether the Portable Housing Trust had ventured an opinion and if they haven't, then I'm. I'm, I'm backing up to Tom and Barry's experience. So yes, as it, as it spreads, as it's, as you have it currently now, I, I would support.
I think we'd have to make one other decision in terms of what is the other sixty percent unit? Is it a one bedroom or a three bedroom? You know, we'd have to.
Wouldn't we want to do like? Do another one bedroom?
So, you know, there's two units at sixty percent AMI, so. Sorry, you know, this essentially. You know, we'd have to figure out what, what AMI levels these would be.
And when, what, what mix of sixty and eighty do we need? Is any, anything going to tell us that or we can completely decide ourselves?
Well, because there's three bedroom sizes and only two units are required to be at sixty percent, you have to make a decision about what.
Okay, so, so that's the answer I needed. There's, you're saying only two need to be at sixty percent.
Right.
Okay.
And for what it's worth, I just, I'm talking to Gail, she's. The one who does it. She said the three bedroom at sixty percent is probably the one. That is, I don't want to say easier to fill, but that's, there's more of a demand. It's probably the way to look at it.
Okay. Well, I think, you know, that's more likely to be a family. At sixty percent, which I think people would be supportive of rather than a single person. At sixty percent. Jesse?
I, yeah, I guess in the absence of. Recommendation from the Housing Trust. Tom and Barry know what will be filled. I think that's the way to go.
Yeah. This looks like. Where I, where I was headed, Nate. Okay, sounds, so any objections to what we now have on the screen? All right. All right, why don't we move on?
Sure, so yeah, all, all these.
Are we close to done, Nate? So we can take our break soon or do we need to?
This is it. So I think we're pretty close, actually.
Okay, alright.
So, you know, we, there. So just to reiterate that, you know, all these conditions are about the affordable units that we have basically until the end of the. The conditions, you know, there's one piece, we talk about, you know. They, you know, the applicant works with us to submit a local action unit to get it on the SHI. They're affordable in perpetuity. I think right here, number sixty-eight, there's a local preference, so up to seventy percent of the affordable units at initial lottery can be reserved for. You know, eligible households that need local preference, which is listed here, is the permit granting, you know. Authority's ability to say it could be any percent, up to seventy percent's the maximum. It could be fifty percent, it could be less. And so. It's a discussion to have if you feel strongly about having a certain percent local preference.
I'm going to ask, why seventy percent and why not just say? Seven of the nine.
You just based on, it's a percentage.
Just on, in terms of the legislation and the regulations, it's.
Yeah, the state regulations, right, it's, right, it's a percent, yeah.
Well, why don't we then put in parenthesis, i.e. Nine of, seven of the nine, because I mean, basically it's a proportion and the question is whether we're rounding up or down. And so I thought it might just make it clearer if we said what it means for this project.
Well, we say no more than seventy percent.
So that'd be.
So we would round down.
Right.
Alright, okay.
I mean, so, you know, some, you know, there is, you know, some discussion out there that local preference is exclusionary, right, that if. You know, you don't have a, a demographic. You know, certain demographics in your town, the local preference doesn't help fill the units, you know, equitably in terms of. You know, who's available in terms of who wants affordable unit. So. You know, it, we have to justify this to the state anyways, that we have the need and demand. And so I just want to, you know, let the planning board know that there, you know, there are discussions about what is local preference. You know, a good or a bad thing.
Yeah, I mean, it seems like a lot of the conversation around affordable housing is about. Accommodating people who otherwise can't afford to live here.
Right.
Which implies they're not here. Until they move into the affordable unit. So local preference kind of works against that.
It could, or it could, you know, or some people would say that. You know, it's a, if we're providing some local support that, you know, we're giving. These categories, you know, the ability to. Try to get into one of the units. Again, this applies only at the initial lease up and then afterwards everyone just goes on a waiting list and so.
Right. Alright, do, so do we need to? Specify a, you know, do we need to say a specific amount?
You could say fifty percent or up to, no more than seventy percent's the maximum allowed by the state and so.
Folks, are you good with six out of nine? Jesse looks good, Bruce looks good. Can't see Karen. Karen looks good. And Fred looks good. I guess, I guess it's six out of nine.
Alright. Seventy, the regulatory agreement shall be approved by the state and recorded at. The Hampshire. County Registered Ds prior to the issuance of any certificate of occupancy with a copy provided to the building commissioner. I just. Wanted to call that out. I think that's the right order.
Nate, I would just put in front of any cert, maybe any final certificate of occupancy or eliminate any and just puts like the issuance of. The final, because I think then later, as we've experienced, right? As long as you're in the process, sometimes Rob will issue a temporary certificate of occupancy, but you don't get that final until everything's put to rest. Thank you.
Does that work for the board?
Yep.
Alright, seventy-two and seventy-three. Similar to, you know, somewhat redundant to seventy, the affordable unit shall be available and the tenant selection process shall be. Shall be in process. At the time of any full or partial certificate of occupancy for completed units, however, at the discretion of the building commissioner. A certificate of occupancy may be issued and exclude the affordable units until the tenant selection process has been completed. And inspection services had, has been provided documentation of the completed selection process. The affordable units shall be occupied at all times only by qualifying tenants in accordance with the regulatory agreement. And so this allows for what Tom mentioned, sometimes the way the marketing of affordable units works and then the tenant selection, it can take a little bit of time to go through the list. Of applicants to qualify them and then get them into units. Seventy-three's new, something we haven't done before with affordable units, but I think is important. The applicant shall report to the building commissioner on the occupancy status of the affordable units. At six-month intervals following the issuance of the first certificate of occupancy. Until all affordable units are occupied by incoming eligible tenants. The report shall include reasons and explanations if the units remain vacant for an extended period of time and efforts taken to fill the units. And so sometimes we hear that with projects that have inclusionary units, an affordable unit might not be filled for a year or eight months or some. Extended period of time and staff will look into it, but. I want to, you know, put the onus on the applicant to come back and kind of follow up with this. We've never had the ability or conditions that do this and so usually it's then staff. You know, chasing it or hearing about it.
Um, any objections?
No, I think it's a, I think it's a terrific, terrific condition.
Alright.
Alright, and then the last one for amenities, it just says the entire project site and building shall be smoke-free, non-smoking. To the extent allowed by law, if that's.
That's, the heading amenities seems a little strange to, to be the, for that content.
I know.
Sounds like it ought to be talking about the, the roof decks and the workout rooms and that kind of thing.
We, or we can move this condition and put it. That's, that's it for the condition.
Isn't that kind of part of a management plan?
This is, I mean, we, like, I, you know, I'd be okay moving this up into the general conditions.
Yeah, why don't we do that? Alright, so we're gonna, we're gonna hold off Tom tonight. I know you don't want to come back and see us again in a month, but. We're all looking forward to seeing you again. So, everyone, I'm going to need a motion to continue. To March nineteenth, I think it is. Is that right, Nate? March nineteenth and at the moment. We don't have anything at six thirty-five yet, do we?
No.
No, but we will have, will likely have something that evening as well, but.
Well, don't we want to kind of?
Oh, no, I agree. This should, this should be first on the agenda.
Be first and treat it quickly and move on.
Yep.
And just so I'm clear, nothing else is needed from us. We'll show up that evening. You open it. Say, okay, you've got your variance approval.
Yeah, you show up with your variance and we'll be expeditious with you.
Okay, perfect.
Any objections to my statement, board members? Alright, I think I've got someone lined up to make a motion to continue and someone to second. Bruce?
So moved.
Alright, thank you, Jesse.
I'll second that.
Alright, board members. Starting with you, Bruce.
I'm an I.
Thank you, Fred.
Aye.
Thank you, Jesse.
Aye.
And I'm an I as well.
And Karen.
Oh, Karen, why do I keep forgetting you tonight?
I.
I think it's because you're at the bottom of my checklist here and there's a couple of people who are not here. Sorry about that. Thank you. So that's five in favor, two absences. Tom, we'll see you on the nineteenth.
Be in a month. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll see you in March.
Time now is eight thirty-nine. I guess it's time for our five-minute break. Please come back at, by eight forty-five. Pam, did we lose Nate? Oh, there he is. Okay.
Yeah, no, he's there.
Yeah, he's there. I, I just. All right, time is eight forty-six. I'm hoping Bruce and Nate and Karen can come back. All right, Bruce is back. Now down to Karen and Nate. Here's Karen. There's Nate, okay. All right, so the time now is eight forty-eight and we can continue with our agenda. Next item, number four, general housing discussion. First part of that is to continue the footnote M discussion and possible vote to consider as a zoning amendment. I guess, uh, anybody from the housing subcommittee want to make a motion? Uh, I guess I'll thank you guys for withdrawing your motion two weeks ago and giving me two weeks to think about this while, while we waited for the next meeting. Jesse?
Sure. So, yeah, it's a little ironic, but Doug, do you want to discuss at all? I mean, the four of us.
Well, I have a couple of comments I was gonna make, um, the rationale for my, my objection to this, but, uh, I can do it before or after the motion. It doesn't matter.
Okay, then I'll move to vote that we adopt. Or like, I guess that we send this amendment to council. Is that the right motion to make?
Well, why don't you read what the motion, what the amendment is? Cause, uh, so we've got something, you know, cause I don't, I don't know.
Is that, is that, sorry, is that the right thing to do? We're moving it. Cause we're not approving it. We can't approve it.
Right. We would be recommending to council that for their.
Okay, so for footnote M, we propose to change from four thousand square feet to six thousand square feet in each instance as follows. M, in addition to the areas required by this table for any existing dwelling units on the lot, the density for new townhouses, section three point three two-two and apartments, section three point three two-three shall not exceed one dwelling unit per six thousand square feet of the remaining lot area, or in the case where there are no existing dwelling units, six thousand square feet for each new dwelling unit beyond the first unit. So I move that we suggest that amendment.
Recommend to town council.
Town council.
All right. Anybody want to second it? Uh, Fred raised his hand before Bruce got his digital hand up. Okay, discussion and maybe I'll just say my piece and then we can move on. But I will ask for public comment at some point of soon. Uh, so if some of you in the public want to comment about this, now is the time to do it. Um, so the points I wanted to make were, first of all, I don't really, there was, uh, in the sort of document you, uh, that the housing subcommittee, uh, sent to the planning board, there was discussion about the the legitimacy or illogic of the reason that it was originally changed or, or previously changed to, uh, four thousand square feet. I don't really, I don't really care about the illogic in the past. Um, my objection is that I do not want to be moving in the direction of reducing density uh, in areas where there's high demand for housing. I think that's the wrong direction to move. And so, you know, I know that, that, uh, some of the uh, proponents of this kind of thing are living around the university um, in neighborhoods that are increasingly occupied by students. And, um, you know, I, I do not think that it's a bad thing for, for students to be congregating around the university, um, where they can walk or bicycle to, to school and leave their cars at home. Um, and so, or not even have a car, although that doesn't seem to be the case with very many students that I, I see on my street. Um, so I think that by, uh, by passing this, we would, we're preventing a, a a natural demand from happening and a concentration of students around the university, um, which will continue, but just in a slower, uh, at a slower rate. This is also counter to the governor's efforts to create more housing. And, um, I don't think that's a good look for Amherst, especially if we're interested in getting exemptions from some of the requirements. Thirdly, um, you know, by letting, by letting more housing happen around the university, um, I think it will reduce or slow the pressure on other housing in town. And that that would be, those are the neighborhoods that long-term are likely to stay predominantly residents rather than have a high concentration of students. So those are the reasons that I, uh, oppose, oppose the, the motion. Uh, I've recognized I'm probably the only one in, in the room or on the board tonight who, who opposes it. Um, so I, I can read the room and, uh, we can have whatever conversation we want to have, but I expect us to have a vote and move on. Karen?
Um, I, I also think that we need more density in the middle of town. I think by approving the, um, the six thousand square feet, go, going back on, on, uh, footnote M gives us time to plan this density in a way that it's not going to destroy um, some very, in my opinion, essential areas, residential areas, um, which need to be preserved for the university, for, for the sake of everybody to have. Because the, the spread of, uh, close to the university houses is so fast and, and occupies a lot of the central part, uh, Lincoln Avenue, Sunset Avenue, all these places, which I think add a lot to the way the, the, uh, town feels, the residential feel, which I think is attractive to faculty and people that want to live here. That could so quickly be destroyed if we don't take measures to preserve it. It's not just one street after another and it, yes, students are, are good. We need them. But look at these neighborhoods that were once, uh, residential neighbors, neighborhoods, what they look like now. If you're going to Page Street and some of these other streets where you have maybe one uh, family left where that used to be all families and, and walk there on a weekend and, and see what will happen to the inside of, uh, Amherst of this residential area. This central part I would, I would, uh, say will be lost if we don't act to, to preserve it. And then we have time to say, how can we do the infill in a way which is attractive, which will still allow, uh, families with children and not just students to be able to live here. It's going too fast and it needs to be regulated.
All right, uh, Jesse?
Thanks, um. I respectfully disagree with your position. That's totally fine. I do need to push back a little bit, but I do not think this is a not in my backyard situation. Yes, I live in the middle of one of the neighborhoods as is Karen, but that's really not my motivation. I don't think those cars either. We're really thinking about the whole town and the longevity of having people who want to live full-time, year-round, raise families, contribute to schools, libraries, et cetera. Be this a possibility to move in here. And the way we're going, I just don't think it's gonna happen. It will quickly be, we're already priced out of that and, and we're working towards bringing that back. That's all. Thanks.
Okay, Fred?
At the end of the day, uh, I think, in fact, I'm quite certain that the people of the town want this. Yeah, uh, I'm, uh, I, I completely understand the, uh, the principle that the, uh, general residence zoning district is a higher density, uh, zoning district. I don't have a problem with that. I, I live in high-density housing, uh, in a three-family house. And, uh, as I said, I don't have a problem with that, but, uh, the, uh, the consequences of, uh, low, lowering this to four thousand, which should not have happened, uh, uh, is, uh, extreme and, uh, as I, at, at the end of the day, uh, this is something that, uh, uh, when, when this came to a representative town meeting in, uh, in November of, uh, yeah, uh, of, uh, nineteen ninety-three, uh, when it came to a representative town meeting, uh, the town meeting passed it unanimously. So, uh, yeah, this is, this is something that it, it, it should not have been decreased to four thousand and we can correct that, uh, if we take this action now.
All right. Any other comments from the board? Um, I'll go ahead and ask the public if there are any members of the public who want to comment on this. All right, I don't see any. All right, um, we'll go ahead and do a roll call. Uh, starting with you, Bruce.
I'm an I.
All right, Fred?
Aye.
Thank you, Jesse.
Aye.
Karen?
Aye.
All right, and I am an A. Most, motion passes, uh, four to one with two absences. Nate, uh, I guess we need to have a memo to town council uh, recommending this, uh, change to the zoning for them to vote on and then I guess send back to us and CRC.
Right.
All right, any more discussion about that? All right. Uh, the second part of our agenda for general housing had to do with the potential overlay for existing apartment complexes. Nate, um, have you got any new material on that or, uh, have, is there been any advancement in terms of materials staff has proposed, has available?
No, there hasn't been anything, uh, any pen to paper. There were some comments submitted and forwarded to the board in terms of considerations for this. Um, you know, at one point we said we'd look at a map and kind of walk through the area. Um, you know, so, you know, we could do that. You know, my thought, like I said, was keeping it, you know, south of Meadow Street and west of North Pleasant Streets, so one quadrant.
But no. What about Hobart?
Yeah, I, I, you know, so I think that's a, something to talk about. I, I was really considering it, you know, this one discrete area, contiguous area, not jumping streets. And so I guess that's something for the board to discuss if we wanted to.
Right, okay. Uh, Jesse?
As reticent as I am to delay things, I think Lawrence in particular has not been part of the conversations. And I, you know, I don't know what to do. I feel like if we make any decisions now, moving forward, whenever we have the same conversation when the full board is here. So part of me feels like let's spare ourselves some time and maybe, again, maybe the subcommittee, if we meet next, can work on some of the details and bring it back to the full board when everyone's here.
This is. Yeah, I think, yeah, I'm fine with postponing a real discussion about this to a later meeting. Nate, do you think, um, in two weeks you could have a boundary, at least a boundary drawing or something?
Yeah, Doug, you won't be here on the fifth, but, um, I think I can have things to share.
Yeah, and then we had some conversation last time about, you know, height and, um, you know, there, but it was kind of all over the place. Whether we were kind of at our five-story standard or whether we'd even entertain some towers. So, uh, I don't know. It seems like we, the board seems to do better when we have something to react to. So if you were to sort of dra, just draft something that we can then take shots at.
Sure.
Um, that would probably be the way to go. Jesse?
I guess, and I don't know if it's too much to put together, at least for me, having some sense of how many units and bedrooms we're talking about with the different arrangements is really helpful also, just to think that way. So like, what's the current number of people that are housed there? And then with any iterations, what are we talking about? Just numbers-wise.
Okay, Bruce?
Um, I have asked Nate, uh, I can't remember whether I did the board meeting or maybe it was at a housing subcommittee meeting. Or actually, no, it was by email because it, it put for this, uh, um, uh, housing, uh, unit number chart. And Doug, you provided something. In fact, it was Kathy Shane, Councilor Kathy Shane, who, who asked me for these data. And I said, uh, asked me whether I, the, the board had this. And I said, well, um, in various ways, but I said, I knew that you, Doug, had put together a chart. And that's when I wrote you that email and, and then Nate, you came with, and yet another chart. And I thought that your chart, Nate, was, so you were going to send that to me and then I could kind of consolidate. So if these data are, are already out there in some ways and I can begin to help you put that together, because I've got time to do this. So if you could just send me the, uh, the, the, uh, the, you've sent me a, a spreadsheet, I mean, a PDF of it, but I can't edit it. So if you can send me the, uh, your actual Excel S spreadsheet, then I can, uh, I can fold in what Doug's got and, uh, and then put some additional columns in for things that Kathy was asking for and then perhaps go and do some, uh, digging around for my, myself and see whether I can, uh, be a contributor and a useful contributor here.
Sure, yes. I, I meant to, I, you know, I looked, I didn't find it readily available and then I forgot to dig into where that. then I forgot to dig into where that spreadsheet is. So, what Bruce is talking about for the town, for the Housing Choice Grant, going back a number of years, we started keeping track of units that received building permits in a spreadsheet, and it was broken down by single-family home, accessory, ADUs or accessory structures, and then multi-unit development. And then we have some other details with it. And it pulled from a number of data sources. It's something that we don't have one, you know, it's not easily reportable in our, in our software. So, you know, it's been asked, it's been asked before, and it's being asked again to have something like this, and that, you know, it would contribute to the discussion of, say, an overlay, or if we talk about something, you know, in terms of units. And so Bruce has offered to update it. I actually have talked to staff about trying to use our new permit software to kind of create a database where this could be entered into and reported out. Again, just a discussion. So, you know, I can share that with the whole board as well, too. And you can see the spreadsheet, and then I'll find the Excel version, too, Bruce, for you.
Okay.
Okay. Good, good. Oops, hit hand down, Brucey.
Okay. Any, any, so note, we'll postpone a longer conversation about this until later. And Nate, I think it would be great. I mean, if it's next time, great. If it's not till the time after that, that's probably okay, too.
Yeah, no, since our discussion, I haven't think about that. You know, like, I've driven by, thought about buffers, height, so I can, I just need to get, like, pen to paper and a map or two.
Okay. All right. All right. Time is 9:06. Moving on to old business topics reasonably, not reasonably anticipated. Anything? Pam or Nate? Nothing? Nope. New business, anything?
No.
Karen?
We mentioned that at some time, we wanted to put on our agenda, the idea of slowing, slowing traffic down. That's, our constituents keep asking me, is there anything that the planning board can do to kind of slow traffic in the, in downtown, particularly Amity, and try to work toward making it more pedestrian-friendly in that way? Can we put that on our agenda as something that we?
Isn't that something that, that we have a transportation subcommittee or a transportation committee in town? Aren't, aren't there other entities more appropriate than the planning board, Nate, than, that would deal with traffic calming?
There is. I, you know, I think it's a good point. You know, Jesse had also emailed and asked about food trucks, and other people have asked about food trucks. And although it's not necessarily under the planning board's jurisdiction, say, food trucks, or say what Karen's talking about, things happening in the right-of-way, it could be that we have an agenda item, you know, it could be related to traffic calming, and the planning board could then, you know, vote to recommend or send a letter to, you know, town council, transportation advisory committee, or others. And so it could, I don't, I don't see any harm in having it be an agenda item. And then, the board doesn't really have jurisdiction over it, but we could recommend others consider things. And I think that's fine to do.
Okay. All right. So Nate, maybe it's something to put on an upcoming agenda.
Yeah, I mean, you know, South Hadley's, right, it's been, there's been articles in the paper, the whole town of South Hadley, you know, there was a survey asking residents what they thought. They're trying to implement it on a few streets, different traffic calming measures. And so I think, you know, if the board has ideas or recommendations, or just, you know, try to point people to, to areas of concern, I think that's worthwhile.
Okay, Jesse?
Well, I'm certainly happy to talk about these things in this group. Do we have that? Do we have the expertise to even recommend something? Like, it does feel outside of what we're talking about normally, and I would like us to focus on the planning pieces.
Yeah, I guess when I say recommendations, I mean, it's like really generic, like, look at traffic calming measures or safety measures. You know, it's not like we're going to research what those are, just.
Yeah, I'm kind of in Jesse's court on this one. I'd rather talk about things we have to talk about than, or, and we're the only ones that do talk about, and leave the other stuff to the other group.
And I'm not saying it's not a real issue, Karen.
Yeah, I just, but the Transportation Advisory Board, is that what the name of, you know, that's their bailiwick. Oh, we lost Nate. Karen, and then Bruce?
I just think it would not take that much lot, a time. And I think to give a nudge in this direction, that this is something, we have a lot more visibility. Nobody really heard, hears that much of a, people tuning in from the town to the transportation committee, and they do to us. And I keep getting comments about, about this. So I think if we take a little bit of time to recommend that this is something that be taken up, it would be helpful.
Okay, Bruce?
Karen Irish is going to suggest that perhaps you talk to the chair, or somebody perhaps you know. Anyway, somebody on the Transportation Advisory Committee, and find out what their level of interest and activity is. You know, in other words, it may be that they're already doing something, or it may be that there may be, in other words, rather than have us going cold on this, I would prefer to have a, have some particular strategic mission by the, we're spending time on it. And you could provide that by, by having, first of all, surveyed the, the group and verified that, as you say, that some engagement by the planning board actually would be useful. I'd like to know that that was true. You were speculating there, but you don't have to. You could go and find out.
All right, Jesse?
I actually have been meeting with Tracy from the transportation committee, so I kind of do have been active in that way.
And, and they've indicated that action by, and energy from the planning board would be useful?
No, no, they haven't actually. Nope.
Okay. Would, have you any sense whether they think we'd be meddling in their territory?
No.
Okay. All right.
But that's not the case either. I, I'm just going to withdraw this. I'll bring it back in a different way after I coordinate with them. Good point.
Yeah, sorry, I was, I mean, I think, Karen, if you wanted to, you could email, you know, the town manager's office, or, you know, I could, if you send me an email, I can forward it on. You know, that's fine. If you email me about that, and I can forward it on to staff and others.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, passing along complaints is something we certainly can do as individuals.
The thing is that these are not really so much complaints, but these are very good ideas from a lot of neighbors. And they just say, can't you sort of bring this up? And I have talked to Tracy about it. And then it gets very technical about, like, do you want to study the map and see where the sidewalks should go, and things like this? So, and I, and I think we have also sent emails to the transportation, and maybe to you, Nate, too, in this direction about the food truck, about parking, you know, just different things. But yes, I'll pursue it, and I'll be more specific if I bring it up. Thanks.
Okay. All right, great. Time is 9:13. We'll go on. For me, in our subdivision applications, Pam?
No.
Nothing tonight? Upcoming ZBA applications?
Nate, I don't have a report, but do you? Are you aware?
Not, I mean, there's, you know, there's a few upcoming applications, one for, you know, a duplex, the variance request at Tom, for Tom. There's a batter, battery energy, energy storage system on Sunderland Road that's proposed to be made smaller, so they're going to amend their permit. But I don't, I don't have any, you know, any other projects necessarily.
Okay. Upcoming SPP, SPR, SUB applications?
Sure. So the Jewish Community of Amherst will likely come before the board on March 5th to request site plan review modification to install a solar canopy over the parking lot. You know, there's, and then there's small changes, like a transformer pad in the back of the building, but it's a pretty straightforward project. And then Archipelago Investments has submitted a site plan review application to put buildings down by Atkins. And so they had previously requested a variance, and I can't remember if it was denied or withdrawn, I think it was withdrawn. But anyways, they've, they redesigned it so that there are mixed-use buildings, and, you know, it will need some waivers or a special permit from the planning board for possible heightened setbacks. And so that'll probably be on the second March meeting.
Okay, Fred?
Yeah, Nate, I remember talking to Hilda Greenbaum about the one down near Atkins, and that was an actual rejection by the ZBA. That, that, that was rejected.
All right. All right. Committee and liaison reports. Bruce, anything for PVPC?
Yes, there was a meeting last Thursday. It was, I have to say that it's, I should report that it's interesting experience, this Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. They have Zoom meetings, of course. There are upwards of 20 or more, 20 or 30 people. I, two thirds, or more than two thirds of the screens have got, people's screens are blacked off, the way we are when we do our five-minute break. It's, it's, it's a very discouraging experience participating in this thing, because you, you really feel that half, more than half the people are probably either not there or doing something else. So it's, it's hard to get energized. And I think you've heard me on, in a different way on this before. So it's, it's, it's not, it's not very satisfying to know how this function works. However, they did have reports from two folks who were giving presentations, one on the, the the political situation in, in Washington, and another, you know, in, in Boston, vis-à-vis the current legislative agendas and so forth. The report from Washington was, as you can imagine, was, was surreal. The one from Massachusetts was much more interesting and so forth, as we begin a two-year legislative season, apparently. I mean, apparently, I didn't realize that our legislative season's run two years and not one, but I'm learning. I was, we were told that, beginning in April, we will be doing face-to-face meetings, because the, it seems as though the state are not able to do what they've done before, which is to renew the ability for us to conduct ourselves by Zoom. It's not that that piece of legislation hasn't been filed, apparently. It's just that it's been filed in conjunction with other pieces into a bill. It's not a unique item in a bill, as far as I could understand. It's clustered, and so it's going to be more contentious, or it's going to be just more complicated, and it'll take longer in it. And so the PPPC meeting in April, we are told, this is the next meeting, will be a face-to-face meeting. So I guess people will either be not at all there, or they won't at least be behind their Zoom cameras turned off. The, so I don't know what that means for, for planning boards, for buildings, elementary school building committees, all these other things that happen around town. But it may be that we are heading towards face-to-face meetings, as far as I can gather. There were other items, the town assessments were passed, and budgets and so forth, was discussed and set up for the next meeting. And there was one final piece, the municipal joint trans, the municipal joint transportation committee or commission of the PVPC has two people from each of the 40 odd towns. And this was another one of these very, not terribly well-attended meetings. And over the past year, Amherst, the two people from Amherst on that committee, committee, haven't attended a single meeting. So Nate, I was, put it on my agenda to, to say, do we know who are the appointed members to that PVPC subcommittee, or that, that regional committee? Because they're having increasingly trouble getting a, getting a quorum. And it's apparently because people are appointed to these committees, and then they leave town, or they die, or they, whatever, and they're not reappointed. And so these committees are kind of dying on the vine. And, but, you know, this is a committee, apparently, which is with these, these transportation budgets and so forth, not being at the table is perhaps consequential. So I thought we should find out who those people are, and make sure they realize that they are either not attending, or that they're, they disappeared. And we should ask the appointing authority to have two more people who will show up. Bill Dwyer, the fellow in Hadley, the neighbor is, is the chair, and so he's quite active. So he's not, we've got a lot of activity just across the line. But for Amherst, and there's probably two, a third of the other towns, no representation at all in the, in the past 12 months. I, there's, there's a bunch of other things, but that's, that's essentially the grab bag of interesting things that I learned at the last meeting.
All right. Thanks, Bruce. Thanks.
Can I ask whether we know whether this, are we prepared to face-to-face in a month or two?
Nate?
I guess we'll have to wait and see. I know that it's also in the Municipal Empowerment Act, you know, filed by the governor, so there's, you know, some thought is that if it's not, if the legislation isn't ready, there may be an executive order that extends hybrid to remote meeting. So I'm, you know, I, right now, I'm not, you know, I'm not, we'll do whatever we need to do. So I'm not, I don't, I don't know. We'll see what happens.
Yeah.
And in terms of Bruce, in terms of your Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, we, you know, we list you and then Jack as the alternate. So I guess, would be asking, again, probably Angela in the town manager's office, what, or who are these other, you know, appointed officials? I don't, I'm not aware of.
Maybe I should send you an email with the best effort I can to see what that actual name of that commission is, because I'll try and remember to do that. And, and then, I, maybe I could, maybe I can send it to Angela and copy you. I think I've got her email address.
But you're sure it's not you, Bruce, right?
No, 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 this, the, the commission membership is, is clear. It's the, this other body that is a part of, or in the orbit of the planning commission.
Okay. All right. Jesse, anything from the housing subcommittee?
We did not meet last week. We're hoping to meet next week. I can also report, I was asked to go to the Housing Trust meeting last week, which I did. And there was a, how do I say this? It was, it was a tense conversation. They just wanted to hear what subcommittee was up to. And conversation quickly turned to student home definition. And there was a lot of resistance to that idea, which I'd like to think we talked through. But, yeah, it was good, good to get some different perspectives for us to consider as we try and move forward with that. So.
Karen, Design Review Board?
We're going to meet again this Monday. We haven't met since the last meeting.
Okay. Report of Chair, time is 9:23. My only thing to report is that I will be away at the next meeting, so Johanna will preside. Nate and Pam, anything from staff?
No, I mean, I'll mention the downtown design standards, you know, that's an ongoing project. And there's a working group, I think, happening next, or a week and a half. And then there will be some public meetings to look at draft standards. So I just, you know, make sure everyone stays aware of that.
Okay. All right, time is 9:24. I guess we are adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you, Doug.
Thank you, Doug.